Hi, Guller. We have a few more items for today's work session, but we are bound and determined to be done by five o'clock. So up next, final state legislation legislative session update as they are doing a full court sprint to sunny die.
Yes, and I'm going to talk fast, but hopefully slow enough that Tracy will be able to join us online as well. The rest of the county's GR team is busy GR-ing this afternoon. So, good afternoon, not good morning as my notes say. I'm Erin Doyle, Senior Government Relations Manager, and I will be going through this as quickly as possible, and will be happy to answer questions as best I can and have the notes from your team. So very quickly, we are going to go through some policy bill updates and then last minute notes on the state budget. Remind you that we have no more than 12 days left in the session. And as always, what further information do you have or do you need? I have the information, so let's get into the policy updates. As has been reported soundly in the news and newsletters and memos to your board, the transportation package or trip bill, House Bill 2025, was introduced early last week. They then swiftly held three public hearings, each one focused on a different topic. The third one was on operations maintenance, is where the county provided their testimony, both the written letter that your board approved and then Commissioner Fai waited very patiently for over an hour and a half from when I sat, what it sounds like, to participate on using those same talking points to really support the fact that we, we knew, we know we need money. And this bill is now prognosticated to generate about $1.8 billion per year, starting in 2029, and $2 billion annually by 2034. That's from the Legislative Revenue Office. They are, of course, never done, and they are apparently working on amendments to the bill. The work session is scheduled for tomorrow to review that final bill text. And then it is expected or anticipated that the committee will vote to advance the bill on Wednesday or Thursday. Believe they have the votes for it, and that it could be scheduled for floor votes on Friday and Saturday. Since the committee is a joint committee, they don't have to go back into committee. They just one floor to the next, sort of the House and then Senate. And the Senate is currently scheduled tentatively for floor on Saturday, which is also a pretty good sign that session is coming to a close. Next slide, speaking of to one of our major priorities for the session was on housing preservation. And please report that two of the three bills that were part of that preservation package have been signed into law. First is Senate Bill 973, which requires landlords to provide notification to tenants with 30 months' notice. That is coming out of contract for affordability. So that is a significant extension, gives more time to prepare those tenants whose rent will be going from protected as affordable and into market rate, and give our teams opportunities to work with them if we have the capacity and the staff and they qualify to be moved into other affordable housing options. Carly notes that she made one typo on this slide. It's Senate Bill 32 that was signed into law, not 31. That bill requires the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department to maintain a website that will provide up-to-date information and data on all regulated affordable housing units in the state. This is the dashboard to show where our preservation needs to occur across the state. What they have now is going to be plus up. This has been part of two of the major components that we have been supportive very actively based on the experiences we've had and what we project is going to happen in Washington County. Now, all they need is the money. Two other bills I wanted to bring to your attention that we often are asked about, but rarely put into the slideshow, House Bill 3518, which has been a priority for the Association of Oregon Counties, and Washington County has been done doing a lot of work to support, would change the main, the means by which assessment and taxation is paid for. First, it would exchange the use of delinquent tax interest to instead allow a county to hold back 0.3% of revenues. The tax interest, it has been flat. The 0.3% would allow it to increase as property tax base increases. So it's a slightly more indexed and ever-growing portion. The second thing is it increases and then indexes the document recording fee. There's a portion of that fee currently that goes of $10 that goes into assessment and taxation. The bill states would have it go to 19. There is an amendment that's being offered to drop that down to 15. The amendment would also limit the indexing to allow for three moments of indexing when that indexing rate puts it at $5 increments above. So when it would hit 20, when it hit 25, and when it would hit 30. And then the third mechanism for paying for this important function would be to have a direct appropriation of $10 million from the state. I will say the bill is still opposed by special districts and school districts and various other folks. It is now stalled out in the House Revenue Committee. I don't have insight into what will get us over that hump. Because there is an appropriation included in the bill, it would go from revenue into ways and means and then have to go through the ways and means process. The $10 million seems to be a bar, maybe. But we have gotten more folks to say it's incredibly important that A&amp;T be able to do effective work because the return on investment doesn't just impact Washington County or one county in the state. It impacts Washington County and the constituent property taxing, special districts, the constituent property taxing cities, and our school districts. The work continues. We are hopeful we can get it over the edge in the next 12 days, but it is becoming harder to see a path forward. However, transient lodging taxes in HB 3962 does appear to be moving forward. There was an amendment and that had passed out of committee last week, and I totally lost my computer there for a second. Moving on to a floor vote, this would shift the current percentages by which we retain four county or city services and the percentage that goes into tourism. Currently, that's 70% for tourism, 30% for services. This would flip that to 40% for tourism and 60% for county services. And services is more clearly defined to not just be emergency and public safety services, but all manner of services that we provide, so it becomes closer to general fund. It would also allow, if we have unexpended net revenue from the TLT in the past, to be allowed to spend it according to this ratio with 40% towards tourism and 60% towards county services.
You're saying this has legs right now?
It has legs right now. It has, it had legs in the House. If it has legs in the Senate is the next question. Fortunately, revenue and finance usually talk with each other, those two committees, and don't move things at the end of session unless they think that it can move forward on the other, in the other chamber.
How would that work, though, for us, considering that we just signed an agreement with six port one valley for X amount of dollars? Not an allocation of TLT, but specifically an X amount of dollars? So if those dollars are reduced by the flipping of the formula?
Well, it just allows flexibility. It doesn't require that you do that, right?
I will do more digging and I will talk with our general counsel because it's like a contract thing as well. So I don't want to answer that question off the cuff.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this? All right, then I'll turn it to Tracy.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Harrington and members of the Board for Clean Water Services. For the record, Tracy Rainey, Government Relations Manager for Clean Water Services. Appreciate the opportunity to provide a very brief update. Wanted to share with you some good news. Two, really our two top priority policy bills for this session. Both have made significant progress in the last couple of weeks. We've talked a number of times about both of these bills. House Bill 2169 is the reuse investment, and House Bill 2947 is the PFAS BioSolid Study. Both of those bills passed out of the Ways and Means Committee on Friday of last week. They were voted on the House floor and both passed, and we are expecting that they'll be up for a vote on the Senate floor later this week, hopefully. So, good news, we do believe that both those bills will get through this session before they adjourn. So that is the only update that I have to share with you today.
Any questions for Tracy?
Yes, actually, I don't know if this question goes to Tracy or Ms. Edwards, but hearing that service districts continue to have a position against House Bill 3518, is that service districts of Oregon? Or is that an association that Clean Water Services as a service district participates in, or what?
It was the position of the Special Districts Association of Oregon on the record. I can't speak to the remainder of participation in that association. I will say that on the record, in the testimony that was provided, it appears that some special districts disagree with the association and have stated that. I don't think Clean Water, we've not asked Clean Water Services specifically.
Okay, well, I think it's something we want to come back to, not this session, but, you know, if we are a dues-paying member of the association and whatnot, if, if we want to take any different approach or not. That's it, for future consideration, don't worry your mind about it this session.
So noted. Thank you for the question. With that, I will turn it over to the budget conversation, and this is information that your board has probably heard a few times from us just today as we've been working through the impacts here. As you are aware, it was reported out in the budget presentation. We are expecting a loss of $2.4 million per year for the biennium based on what we thought we were getting out of the governor's recommended budget, which was already below the cost allocation study. As a result of that, your board will be taking the actions necessary in conjunction with our leadership, both in the CEO's office and in community corrections. In the Oregon Judicial Department, that specific budget is normally where you will find the money for the planning projects for courthouses. This year's budget, again, did not include Washington County's courthouse planning dollars. We still have rocks to kick over. We are doing our best with our delegation to see if that can happen. We had our independent funding bill, which was House Bill 3180. It's stuck in just ways and means. It is not down in a subcommittee, which does not bode well for its passage. However, there is that magical bill that we all like to pin all of our hopes and dreams to. That's why we call it the Christmas tree bill, is there should be an ornament for everyone. And we are hopeful in one of those end-of-session budgets, they will come through and recognize the shared need and shared obligation for courthouse planning so that we can start that process now, so we can find progress in the decade to come on that project. Not really sure where, why that line was drawn as low as it was for courthouse planning dollars. We will look into that as well. Finally, I don't know if this is good news. It's news today, that's what I have. In, in a series of bills, the state has already, has set aside $400 million for the county and tribal deflection programs. What has been called for is a $300,000 floor to every county and tribe that is participating in deflection, and then the remainder will be funded by a formula. Right now, we are working with the behavioral health staff, the deflection team, and we're going to connect with the CJC to see what that formula is going to look like and how much we can influence it to make sure that we can continue to provide the level of service that is going to be necessary to run an effective deflection program here in Washington County.
Just in aggregate, is that viewed as similar to what, I know it was kind of funded mid-cycle last time. So is this like on par with that, or do we view this as a decrease, or we don't know?
It's.
Not specific to our county, because I realize that depends on the formula, but.
Yeah, I believe this is under what we were hoping for, given the biennial expenses. I don't remember exactly where those numbers were, but I will make sure, I will put that into further written.
Certainly not an expansion.
So Erin, my question is, the previous formulas, we were not at all comfortable with.
Correct.
And so is this a start-from-scratch formula? It is not a revision of the old formulas, is that correct?
That is correct. We did a lot of work through the process. We, there was a comprehensive reform bill for substance use disorder and the criminal justice system bill that I think we have at least written about, and I pulled that out, that information out. But it moved it completely away from the OHA-based formula, which was used in the last biennium, and now is requesting that CJC create their own formula. And there were pieces of that direction from the legislature that we are going to call the question on for CJC related to the number of people going through deflection versus the quality of, and the outcomes for people going through deflection. So we'll continue working on that in the interim, but that bill has already passed through the process.
Yeah, I'm just cautious about not pitting the counties against each other like, like the last situation certainly did.
I, we are, we are trying to work, as usual, in coordination with all the counties that are participating in the program and through AOC in that process. But at the end of the day, we cannot have another OHA formula problem. With that, turn to the Health and Human Services budgets and the priorities there. Forgive me for reading, but I really don't know what I'm talking about in this one. Due to the challenging revenue picture, the legislature was only able to allocate $5 million for the behavioral health workforce this session. Workforce has been a major priority for us for a few sessions in a row now. Without the workforce, we cannot do the work. On House Bill 2059, the legislature has focused their dollars on building more treatment beds. They are investing $65 million in residential beds. It's helpful because it will, it shows a continued push by the legislature to build out more of that behavioral health infrastructure. But again, we need the workforce, and we are lucky that we already had your leadership on the cat to put us ahead of this process. But the more beds we have in the region, the better off we all will be. The list of projects that this money will be used to fund is not named or identified, but if we expand, maybe in the future. And then finally, both the Oregon Department of Human Services and Oregon Health Authority budgets will be set to current service levels, which current service levels are very rarely escalated at the proper escalator. But there is some good news in relationship to the aid and assist, which saw a bump of an additional $10 million above the current service level amount of $38.9 million. So that is the Health and Human Services scope of the budget that we wanted to provide your board with an update on this time.
Another.
Can you give it based on the five million for behavioral health workforce?
We'll come back with that. I don't have it, and it's not in my notes, but I'll make sure that, I don't remember. This would be additive because it's a House Bill 2024 as opposed to one of the budget bills. So it's, I think we were asking for a bigger pot of money for that.
And is that separate from any licensure issues with workforce?
Yes. I'll make sure that when we come back in July, to totally transition to my next slide, when we come back. Okay, well, we'll provide more of that context, I'm sorry.
Erin, did I hear you correctly? House Bill 2059, that $60 million, $65 million, it's not money we can tap into for the CAT?
I don't have the answer for that exactly, so I will make sure we provide a written response to that question. I apologize, I just, there is no specific projects listed in that bill, and I don't know what the complete scope of purpose and limitations that will be on that, on that. But it's for, for those bets, so I will make sure we get back to you on that. Um, next steps. Tomorrow was the day they were hoping to go out. That's not happening. But it does sound like they are planning to work this weekend, so they are probably trying to get through the remainder of session as quickly as possible. Constitutionally, they have until the 29th, which is a Sunday. And then jointly Clean Water Services and the county will be back for your board, to your board with a work session wrap-up to give a more robust set of information back out, taking into consideration your priorities, our budget needs, and the outcomes of the session. So as always, we've appreciated the amount of work that you all have put in with a lot of individual phone calls, testifying, letters of support, and all of that this session. I'll come back with answers to the questions you asked today, and we appreciate your time, and thank you.
We've got Lisa, half-hour exec session, and other leadership things we need to get to. So unless you can't live without an answer to your question. Okay, thank you very much for doing the best you could, and keep going, GR team, you're awesome. For both agencies, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tracy.
Okay, leadership communication. Ms. Angie, you want to go first?
Sure. Good afternoon, Board. It's Monday, so the document that is in front of you is the draft all-county email. I will note that we are receiving media requests on federal funding right now. So we are working through those, those media answers. We're getting questions from employees at various levels of the count, like what, how should we proceed? So in this case, instead of just communicating this directly through department directors and knowing, excuse me, that there's going to be press sending an all-employee email. The one change, consideration that I will be making in the fourth paragraph, the second line, the sentence starting as we stand today, we will be pausing. So instead of saying not signing, pausing, and then that continues into the next sentence for subrecipients. But I wanted you to have the opportunity to see this and also to provide any comments. Apologize that I didn't give this to you in advance, but we've just.
So we will be pausing any signing or attesting?
Yeah, as we stand today, we will be pausing signing or testing to any agreements or contracts for any new or annual new, annual renewal of federal funding. We also will be pausing award of federal funds to community subrecipients until we have signed a agreement. Are there any concern?
Have awarded them before signing, ever?
If it's, no, but it's connecting that there's also the subrecipient groups. So it flows from us receiving the dollars.
I don't have concerns. No, I liked it. Especially with the modification that you, or you described.
Okay.
That's a better, that's an accurate description of what we're doing.
Just so that you know, one of my updates was, or is, that at the Community Development Policy Advisory Board Meeting of last Thursday, we approved the adjustments to the the home and CDBG funding list. And so that means CIPA Resident Services, Fair Housing Council, CASA for Children, Joint Just Compassive East, Washington County Project Homeless Connect, Boys and Girls Aid Safe Place, Centro Cultural, Forest Grove, Senior Center, BNIS Star Resident Services, Home Plate Youth Services, Family Promise of Tuolton Valley, City of Tuolton, One Need a Pool Center, Tuolton Valley Water Districts, CDBG Facilities and Infrastructure, so on and so forth, are part of that subrecipient list. And then the list goes on with home projects, so. Yeah. Sure, you'll navigate the best you can.
So no other comments or, okay. Always open to feedback. Also, just to let you know, my schedule this week, I will be traveling to Texas in my role as ICMA president, as a reminder for the board and employees. These, the, this is paid for by ICMA and/or my personal funds, not by Washington County. During this time, I will be providing an ICMA update. I have changed my flight to, I'll be returning on midnight on Friday, so I can attend the ACRE retreat on Saturday. I was able to find someone to take my place on a panel I was supposed to be speaking at on Saturday.
Thank you.
Yep, and Marnie will be serving as act during this time.
I think back to ACRE for the portion that I attended from six to quarter to eight. One of the things that I felt difficult to navigate was lack of reference to access and opportunity, and that being an important bridge from where we are today to where we're attempting to go. So good luck with the ACRE retreat. I hope that is better understood after Saturday, that I believe it was last. Because that is something, even though the language was referred to in the resolution and order, I don't think was, was really coming through at all, so.
And Chair, to that point, that's, I think that's a very valid observation. And at the prior meeting, we did review and have a very lengthy discussion of access to opportunity with this.
Yep, and I know I've been pumping those slides out from our roundtable of last Thursday. So I'm just glad I don't have to live in two worlds. One, where if you do something, there's the threat of criminal filing, and on the other, questionable. So I'm just glad I don't have to be part of it while I'm gone on vacation and won't be attesting to anything, so. I think you all have to work with Ms. Angie and her staff to figure out what your work session day is going to be like next Tuesday and what your board meeting is going to be like. So, because the board clerks will need to get that posted.
And by the way, according to my calendar, we started two o'clock, not three o'clock. So is three o'clock the number?
That's why I asked at the meeting.
Let me get revised based on what we need to do.
I've already had a brief conversation with Tanya about that, so. Be updating the calendar if it gets changed.
I would ask that we pause so that I have time to work with staff on what the actual calendar is. I've had others happening, so I haven't.
That's perfectly reasonable, yep. So Marnie is on point while you wrap.
For Thursday and Fridays.
Yeah.
Back Saturday, but I probably will be late for the ACRE meeting since I arrive at midnight. I think you want me to be late.
I'm glad you arrived at midnight, not leave.
Your exes, oh, thunderstorms, yeah, I wish you the best. Thanks. Alex?
Chair, Board, continue to do my process of onboarding. I've had the opportunity to meet with almost every single one of you, and I know we're going to get the last one sorted out. So I appreciate all of your time meeting with me. Had an excellent meeting with Sheriff Mast yesterday. As part of that meeting, she's going to help us with our upcoming recruitment for a couple of attorneys that are going to work closely with our office. And then the county council's office continues to pump out work as we work on some of these more weighty issues that you all are aware of. And that's a lineup for you today.
Elizabeth?
Thank you, Board of Clean Water Services. Four quick items for you. Last week, we had Cewak during that meeting, after another presentation and robust Q and A. The commission voted to recommend adoption of the West Basin Master Plan. And so we'll be presenting the West Basin Master Plan for you in work session at our July 18 CWS day. Item two is, in working with the chair and vice chair, we've identified that we may need an additional CWS day. And so we're looking in September, right now, September 5th seems to be the best day. So expect a hold to be coming through on your calendars. So expect a hold to be coming through on your calendars shortly for that.
I know that Commissioner, I mentioned that she now has August vacation days, but has anything changed on her status the first week of September? Anything? Okay. Great.
Fabulous, thank you. Also wanted to lift up, on behalf of Rick, just share that he and Rick Stanley are acting CEO and general manager for the public. And our utility relations officer met with the city of Beaverton city manager last week, and they had an excellent conversation and covered all manner of topics, including captive insurance, the outside audit that will be conducted and other processes that we're doing to rebuild trust. So that line of communication is open and seems to be going well. And last but not least, tomorrow, we have our all-leaders meeting, which is supervisors and above. My understanding is that the chair and vice chair will be stopping by. Thank you so much for carving out some time. We'll be covering a lot of different topics for our supervisors. But I know that they will be very excited to see you and hear from you just briefly. So thank you for making that yourselves available. And that's it for me.
For board communication, I'll go. You'll all be together on Tuesday. So in case we're short of time, you have that outlet. This past week, I participated in the Woodland Hearth groundbreaking. And it's under construction already, but I think it was an important groundbreaking to memorialize. CIPA's just done some incredible heavy lifting for that project in the city of Tigard. And they have potential options for an adjacent parcel. But hats off to the city of Tigard for all that they have done to support the pipe infrastructure that was necessary. That was a topic of conversation at CDBG with regard to some infrastructure, excuse me, at the Community Development PAB meeting because of funding to cover the infrastructure cost. We also had, that's using home funding. We also had a conversation about home funding for Wood Spring Apartments. But back to Woodland Hearth, you know, I added up the number of affordable housing solutions in the city of Tigard. They've just been knocking it out of the park, increasing the whole portfolio set, offering their tax income financing for, for covering the, the costs for the property development, ensuring that they handled zoning needs and just anything and everything they could to help ensure this delivery. Really incredible work. I've participated with our staff in a call with the governor on behavioral health agreements. We'll get to that. And Commissioner Snyder and I each had the opportunity to sit in a call for the misstep bond. It was the rating call with both the Moody's as well as with the financial firm, Piper Sandler, that we're working with. And I have to tell you, we have, as always, we've heard it before, a stellar county administrator and CAO staff, stellar CFO, stellar LUT director, and doing everything they can to get the highest level rating as possible for that bond.
You guys nailed that.
Yep, yep. Really just terrific work. So despite our having five years of budget challenges, it's been very clear that we are a very stable local, local government and doing all the right things with GFOA best practices and so forth. So.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, if I can just add. So in the city and county management world, your bond rating, that's like, it's almost like your badge, like what your bond rating is. And so why is that important? Because the higher your bond rating, the lower your borrowing interest is. So you're able to invest more in community. And so that is so important. It also speaks to the vitality of your community. From an economic position, it also speaks to your financial management. So they had several questions of the such. And I didn't explicitly, or I forgot, I should say, I tell both Chair Harrington and Commissioner Snyder, there was a method to the presentation too, and great coaching from Piper, like what are the points to hit on, given they are our consultants on this and giving us advice. So it was really great to be able to lift up your board's governance and leadership as we've gone through really difficult times. So things like maintaining stable reserves is important. Fiscal policy is important. So the things that don't get the headlines are incredibly important in this case to make sure that we maintain the most investment. The other thing, and my last comment on this, is that the bond rating, actually prospective businesses, industrial businesses and other companies actually look at community's profile and your bond ratings when they're looking to relocate because it speaks to the vitality and stability of your community. So congratulations to you all. It appears there will be a press release that we will be maintaining a triple A bond rating. So that's the highest we can get.
And lastly, if I could, two things related to your potential consideration for a resolution and order on federal funding. Two things, I forwarded a communique that I provided to leadership of the Washco Dems after having talked with them on Saturday and leveraged all the talking points, information that our great staff provided. Secondly, I want to share some advice from John L. Bell, who helped us considerably with the equity resolution and our community engagement on that. He clearly understood that we're in a situation of compliance or no compliance and saw us on a path to reinforce the value of our language, creating a place where everyone can continue to thrive. And that includes the, the least amongst us. He said that there are language changes all the time, but really double down on the civil rights work. It's not a departure of your core value. And because of the diversity of our community, there's no denying the diversity of our community. And that we haven't been given the opportunity to set these terms. Rather, we have to live with the federal terms and continue to do what we can to invite our community members and for us to reach out to all of them to help us with our goal setting ahead, particularly in the, the plans that we're putting together in order to ensure that we're providing services that our community members need using federal funding and our work to try and do so. So. I just wanted to share that with you. So. Okay. So at this juncture, I know several of you want to get to the Bonamici elected event. So if we might just go to executive session? Okay, so we're going to adjourn to executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zeros to sub F for the purposes of discussing exempt records. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a, all those in favor, please vote for amazing. Thank you. We're in exec session.